All right. Good morning, everyone. We'll get started with our council meeting this morning. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position and also please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. I call on the city clerk, Iowa Nelson, for the roll call.
Councilwoman Tole?
Here.
Councilman Williams is absent today. Also, Councilman Worthy is absent. Councilman Baack?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Keith Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Father, the opportunities before us, Lord, we just thank you for the many blessings you give us. Thank you for all that you are, Father. We pray that you lead us, guide us, and direct us in the business ahead. Father, I do pray for your wisdom, your guidance, knowledge, and discernment to be bestowed on us. Father, may we always know and understand your will, never resist you at any time. We give you all the thanks and the praise for all that you've done and promise to do. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Finance Committee, the special work session, the Community Development Committee Works Session, and the city council meeting that was held March the 8th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of March 4th through the 10th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of accounts.
Proclamations, I see that we have none. We have unfinished business. Our first item is approving an issuance of an alcoholic beverage license to William Avery Jr. Doing Business as Avery Blues Hall of Famer located at 1045 Tuscaloosa Avenue in District 3 for a lounge retail liquor license, Class 1. This resolution was tabled for 90 days on December the 14th. What is the pleasure of the council?
I make the motion, we table this for 30 more days, please.
Second.
Right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to table the resolution for an additional 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
This is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. It's the Wind Down Spa LLC Doing Business as the Wind Down Spa located at 1001 Rainbow Drive, Suite 29 in District 4, has applied for a retail table wine license on or off premises. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor? Pardon?
I can help you.
All right. All right. If you'll come and give your name and address, please, at the podium over here.
My name is Sheila Carrington. I'm the owner of the Wind Down Spa. Address is 225 Brookhaven Drive. Just wanted to speak and say that it's only complimentary wine that's served during spa service.
Okay. All right. Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
I got the motion. Who made the statement?
Second.
Ben, okay. Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 1003 Lancaster Avenue in District 2. This is C.V. Chappell, subject to a mortgage in favor of family savings, credit union, and care of Jenny Jelks being the last known owners. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. This house was destroyed in a recent storm. A tree fell on it. We filed our case in September of 2020. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 614 Tidmore Street in District 2, and this is Stephen Ray Huey being the last known owners. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there one speaking favor?
Madam President, this case involves an accessory building. We filed it in April of last year. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Make the motion, we move to abate.
Second.
Clerk? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 1625 Kyle Avenue in District 3, Robert Gamble being the last known owner. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? All right. If you'll come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Kerry Jackson of Bell &amp; Kay Construction. Address is 1529 Arrowhead Drive. The previous owner was my father. He died a year or so ago unexpectedly, so we've been trying to get the family members together, but I only ask that we get an additional 30 days. Granted, we have completed some of the things that were on the task, so we only have the roof left to do. Because of the weather, I ask that they just extend it another 30 days.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone to speak in opposition?
Madam President, I'm certainly not opposed to allowing 30 days. I haven't heard from the owner until today. We responded with the Police Department a year ago. This property was being used by homeless individuals. There were multiple tents, fires built out on the property, and was just a general nuisance to the entire neighborhood. There was a permit pulled a year ago. The work has been slow. I would ask that if this case is tabled for 30 days, which I'm not opposed to, that they do a little faster work than they've shown in the last year. Thank you, Madam.
Sir, did you understand what he was saying? Because if it really comes before us again, then we will abate the nuisance. What is the pleasure of the council?
Ask for a 30-day table, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our final public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property at 2907 South 11th Street, and this is in District 6, Jerry Humphrey and Brenda Jean Williams being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? If you'll come to the podium over here and give your name and address.
I'm Michael Humphrey, and my address is 604 Osborne Street, Tallahassee, Alabama. My father had that, and he died. He was Jerry Humphrey. And I'm Michael Humphrey. I've got his death certificate and all here. But, you know, it's, we still hadn't, you know, been, hadn't been probated or whatever, you know, yet. But if, you know, if we need to do the work now or something like that, if you give us 30 days, well, you know, we'll make sure that it's all up to par. I mean, I've got a brother and sister, she's here, but he wouldn't be able to make it today. But we can get the work done. I didn't know about for sure exactly what all had to be done.
You all didn't get a notice?
Yeah, I got my notice out of the newspaper.
All right. Okay. Well, we'll hear from our Building Department, and then we'll get back with you. Okay? All right. Is there anyone in favor?
Madam President, this case involves a mobile home. We filed it in July of 2020, over a year and a half ago. There was a building permit taken out in September of 2020. There've been no improvements made to the mobile home. You can see in the picture where there's a large pile of debris laying beside. There's actually another mobile home behind it that I'll be bringing to this body in a couple of weeks. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Brian, do you remember who took out that building permit on this? Who took the building permit out on the trailer?
There was a building permit taken out in September.
You don't know who, who took it out?
I don't know who pulled that. It would've had to have been the owner or a licensed contractor. There is a condemned sign still on the mobile homes. Been on there, you know, for a year and a half that we've been working it, so.
What is the pleasure of the council?
If I gave you all 14 days, could you all make a significant improvement on this and not let me down? Clean up all that stuff outside and really, because you've got two churches sitting there, and those people, you know, they don't deserve all what they're seeing there. And I'm gonna give you 14 days if y'all will promise me y'all bring it up to par. If you don't, you can come back before us, but I'm making most of we give them 14 days, please.
Second.
Can I ask a question? Is someone living in the mobile home at this time?
The windows is out, correct? Yeah. Are y'all gonna try to sell it when you fix it, or rent it, or move in, or what's the plan? Okay. Just, just please bring this up to code and clear up all that stuff that's laying there, all that trash and stuff, and give Mr. Harbison to bring it up for him, if you don't mind, please. Because, you know, I usually don't, don't do this, but, you know, I'm just trying to help you since he died, and it's an eyesore by looking at the pictures here. When's the last time y'all looked at it? Yeah, I advise you to go by today and start one, because we're gonna start the 14 days from today. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Harbison, you said that you were gonna come back with the trailer behind this one. Is this on the same lot?
It's on a different lot.
It's on a different lot? Oh, okay.
Madam President, I would like to remind them also that based on whether they're gonna rent it or sell it or whatever, before you do either one of those, you might want to check with Mr. Harbison on that also, because there are rules and regulations.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I'm asking for a 14-day table on this, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 14 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Reluctantly, aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 14 days.
Everyone up here knows I rarely do this, but this is a different situation here.
Our next resolution is authorizing bid number 3471 for Wyeth Haven Circle Drainage Improvement Project Phase 2. The city engineer has recommended awarding the bid to Bedwell and Horton Excavation LLC, and the amount is $46,475. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next resolution is appointing and reappointing members to the zoning board of adjustment. This appoints Jamel Simmons and reappoints Clarice Robinson and Earl Hurd for terms expiring May 18th, 2024. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Any, any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is authorizing acceptance of a donation from Craig Weatherspoon. This is for an art installation currently located at the 200 Broad Street. It's valued at $10,000. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution adopting the rental rates for various facilities of the Park and Recreation Department, East Gaston Community Center, and the venue. This adds certain pricing changes and combination packages and replaces rates and regulations established by the Resolution Number R-485-16 as amended. It also adds rates for the new East Gaston Community Center. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President, if I could, just a point of privilege here. I'd like to really direct this at the administration and the mayor's office. I've received yet another request for discretionary funding to cover the cost of rentals at the venue. I understand that it's the city's policy not to offer those spaces for free, but if all that's happening is these charitable organizations are then turning around and coming to this council, we get very limited funds to have an impact on our community. And I've spent several thousand dollars this year helping offset the rental rates at the venue for these charitable organizations. So I would hope that we could maybe work together to find out a solution to that that, you know, that doesn't place that burden squarely on this council's discretionary funds every time there's a charitable event over there. But that's all I have, just a side note.
Okay. What we can do, Councilman Wilson, is in fact, this coming up, I believe, the last of this month, the Park and Recreation, which is, I mean, the Educational Committee, which will be talking about park and recreation.
Okay.
So that'll be a good time to discuss that.
Yeah, I'd just like to see us, you know, not fall back on our shoulders when those things happen.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, but there's a motion in a second, I think.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution authorized retention of Ford Howard and Cornet PC. This is to continue legal representation of the city in pending litigation. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Are there any, any board reports? We have a citizen request. We have Mr. Cole, budget inquiries. Good morning.
Last week at the Finance Committee meeting, the chairman of the committee stated that he was in favor of Juneteenth becoming a holiday, and I think he said other members of the council was in favor as well. But at that time, the discussion came, and I think he was giving a recommendation that this come back up on October 1st of 2022. And that meant if that is carried out, Juneteenth was not a holiday last year, won't be a holiday this year, excuse me, and I don't know for a fact it will be one next year. And one of my questions was, what happened to October the 1st, 2021? And I was informed by a member of that group that met that not one black council member bring up Juneteenth at the meeting. And my understanding, they was waiting for one of the black council members to bring it up. They did not. So there was no action or anything taken on Juneteenth. So that gave the white council members a cover, because since no black would do it, they didn't see forth to come forth either. So now, five months later, we are here talking about Juneteenth, and supposedly everyone is in accord with it becoming a holiday, yet you don't intend to do anything about it until October the 1st, which is seven months from now. Juneteenth is three months from this month. Now, if all of you are in favor of it becoming a holiday, you don't have to wait to October the 1st of this year. You could actually do it today if you wanted to, because all you have to do is suspend the rules, you all vote, and it will carry. Now, the Christian lady gave you all some information about the cost of the holiday. I think it was mentioned, ML King Holiday. Excuse me. And the figure she gave was $91,562. That implies that the holiday itself would cost $91,652. I somewhat disagree with that. And there are two businessmen on this council who knows if you have a business, you do budget for employees' payroll, and if it's paid weekly or biweekly, the money is there. So if a holiday come on Friday, you got people coming to work. Money is there to take care of those individuals. So if it's turned into a holiday, you still have that same amount of money. So my question is, and also that the Christian lady, give the amount of how much that day would be if it was not a holiday, if you just had city workers. And in city workers, that's full-time and part-time workers. How much that amount would be, and then how much it would be if it would become a holiday? And it wouldn't be no $91,000. It may be 10, 15, or whatever the difference on people who would work on a holiday. But the way it appears here is that for the holiday, it would cost $91,562, and that's not really correct. And my issue is, and some other individuals stated that the mayor did not want this holiday, and since the mayor didn't want it, the council did not vote on it. I don't know if that's true or not, but if all of you are in favor, as everyone say you are, then you can take the vote. And if you do not vote because the mayor does not want it, I'm going to refer back to something the president told me a few weeks ago, that there are some citizens in Gaston who are cowards and who do not have the guts to come before this council to present their issues. So I'm gonna put this back on the council. If you fail to vote on this issue because the mayor does not want it, that means that you all don't have guts, and y'all don't have the intestinal fortitude to vote on this issue. So I'm not setting you up, but that's how it plays out. The mayor, like the president and governor, has veto power. If you pass something he don't like, he can veto it, and it's up to you as a council to attempt to override the veto. So I'm just saying, if you're funny, vote on it. Don't put it up the next year, because that doesn't make any sense at all. And Fort Payne, a city not too far from here, has a population of 14,000 people, approximately. Of that 14,000, 80% are whites, 3% are black, and they have Juneteenth as a holiday. Here we are in Gaston, the population is about 40% black, three black council members, and you are still talking about Juneteenth. Either vote it up or vote it down. Don't keep putting it off. My final thing, I'm gonna sit down. This Christian lady spoke about overtime. It's a big problem in overtime, and most of that comes from the Police Department. If that's the case, then why don't y'all put the Police Department three shifts, three eight-hour shifts, and that's 40 hours a week for each officer? So if you do that, you won't have a big problem with overtime. It's something you all have to think about. Thank you, Madam Chairman, Madam President, for allowing me this time to speak.
Thank you. Okay. We will now have comments from the council. Before we, before the rest of you all start, I'm looking, make sure I don't overlook anybody. I'd like to start off by announcing about the free training for employees. This is something that the ATN and the IDA through the City of Gaston, that's part of the funding, that they offer free classes. And this is gonna be, and you'll hear this again, in April for manufacturing companies in Gaston, Edgeworth County. Companies may enroll up to six employees. So this is something that Gaston funds, it's the Alabama Technology Network along with the IDA, and they're offering free classes, and this will be done in April. At this time, we'll start with you, Councilman Baack.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to remind people in District 4, in the Country Club and Clubview area, this past week, we've had numerous dog complaints. We do have a leash law, and please make sure your, your animal is on a leash and that the animal can be controlled, and that if it's not on a leash, that the animal's within offense. There's been some situations that could have been really serious that luckily were not as serious as they could have been, so please be mindful of your neighbors and mindful of your, of your pets and really in all of our areas, not just in District 4, but in all areas of the, of the city. And I believe that's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes, ma'am. I want to say this, and I'm sorry to say this, but good morning to everybody except for the Jacksonville State Gamecocks. We got an Auburn basketball game coming up tomorrow against them in the NCAA tournament. Anyway, one quick explanation on the very first alcoholic beverage license that we heard today that we tabled for another 30 days. Just so y'all know, there was a pending court case associated with that location, and we had agreed several months ago that we would not hear or consider the alcoholic beverage license until that course, case was resolved. It looks like it's actually scheduled for later this week, so we just tabled that for another 30 days to wait and see the outcome of this pending court case before we voted on it. Other thing, we adopted the new rental rates for the facilities in Gaston. There were a couple of slight changes, nothing dramatic to the rental rates. The one thing that was significant in this was that we clarified who was responsible for security at events that are held on city property that go beyond closing time. Essentially, if you want to hold an event after hours, we, we require you to have a certain level of security, and you have to pay that security whoever's renting the facility. And we worked with the Police Department to get a reasonable number. Councilman Cannon worked on that, to get a reasonable number to pay the police officers when they are hired as private security for those events. So that was basically the guts of that one. And then the last one, the agreement authorizing the engagement to represent with Ford Howard and Cornet. That's for ongoing litigation. There's no set dollar amount on that, but I will just let the citizens know that the lead attorney in that agreement is billed at $185 an hour, and any secondary attorneys that may be working for the city under this agreement would be billed at $80 an hour. So other than that, that's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
Councilman Cannon?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to speak about, I've been asked about a paving going on, when we gonna start paving? We've already started up paving projects. It's already been budgeted, everything's going now. I think somebody said it was on 15th Street. Doing it now, and they're gonna come around and do all the streets before we get another contract, so we can put out another contract, so we have what we've got done, so just be patient. They don't work in the rain, it's got to be a certain temperature for them to lay that asphalt and stuff, so just be patient. They are working on the streets. That's all I have.
Councilman Reed?
Yes, ma'am, the only thing I had was I withhold any remarks I have until the Chairman of the Finance Committee is here in person, and he can explain everything that we need to know about what's going on today. Thank you very much.
Ms. Alba, you had some announcements from two of the council members that are absent today?
Yes, I do. Councilman Williams is absent, and he asked me to pass this along. And this is from, this communication was from a blessed grandmother by the name of Mary, and she was sorry to say that the Gaston Thunder Aiden Under Basketball Team came up a little short at the state tournament. They finished third on Sunday. There was a pool of 16 of the top recreation teams in the state, but she did want to compliment the experience that they had. The atmosphere was electric, and she only heard great things about our city from people who had traveled here from as far away as Mobile. Parks and Recreation was on point, and she was proud of the investment the City of Gaston makes in our youth, and wanted to thank the city for having a love and desire to see every kid rise to their full potential. And then the announcement from Councilman Worthy. This is in regard to ROSS, R-O-S-S, and that stands for Recovery Organization of Support Specialist. And there's an event, free food, free drinks, and music. The theme is United Community, Transforming and Empowering Lives Through Available Community Resources to Combat Substance Abuse Disorder and Alcohol Use Disorder, Redefining the Stigma of Substance Use and Mental Health. It's going to be at the Carver Community Center on Tuscaloosa Avenue, and the date is Wednesday, March 30. The time is from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
And I forgot during the board committee, not when I call for board announcements, I forgot to ask Chief Reed, was there any kind of update that you wanted to give us?
On COVID or anything?
Yeah, COVID or anything.
No, ma'am, our numbers on COVID are almost nonexistent right now. One of the local hospitals actually has zero COVID patients in it right now.
That's great. That's good news. All right. If there's nothing else come before the council, I call for a motion to adjourn.